Please join us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Note for the record that all council members are present. Thank you. Do we have any deletions, additions, or changes to the agenda?
I'd like to adjourn the meeting in the memory of Arthur Court, husband of Eleanor Court.
Okay. Any other changes? With that, we have a motion.
Second, as amended.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And then, can we have a report out from closed session, please?
The council met in closed session concerning pending litigation. The council took no action on the matter at this time.
Thank you. That brings us to an introduction of Noreen Leek, our new recreation manager.
Yes, I'm very excited to welcome aboard Noreen Leek, who works, who used to work for Menlo Park for eight years in a variety of positions in recreation, including recreation coordinator, recreation manager, recreation supervisor. She ran the Menlo Parks Community Center. She put together their activity guide. One of the unique things that she talked about during her, when we had conversations with her, Clay and myself, was the fact that she went looking to other communities to support their programs. So one of the things that we as a city run up against at times is trying to get enough participants. Noreen took it upon herself when she was in Menlo Park to send out the activity guide to other towns that did not have as robust a parks and recreation program to attract new participants in their programs. So we're really looking forward to that. Noreen has hit the ground running. She is the lead person for us right now on the day in the park. So she's working on that. I'm looking forward to, at one point, that she will take over the Parks and Recreation Commission and going to those meetings all the time for me. She has her bachelor's and degree in recreation and your master's is in business. So she has good pedigree from there as well. We're very excited to have her. So I'd like to introduce Noreen Leek, our new recreation manager. Might you like to go to the mic and...
Come introduce yourself to the worldwide audience. That way, everybody can see who you are and put a face to the name.
Welcome to Brisbane. Thank you.
Good to have you on board.
I've already met you.
I'll just say quickly, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. I feel very fortunate to serve the city of Brisbane as a recreation manager. I've only been here a few weeks, but as Stuart mentioned, I've hit the ground running and have had the opportunity to meet a lot of the community members and really realize how rich in community this place is and how strongly its members feel about living here, owning the city as their own. People want to be out, want to be engaged, and I feel like that's very special. So I look forward to working with each of you, partnering with the local business community, as well as all the community members. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
So that brings us to our next item, which is presentations. And we have the Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Excuse me. And I was contacted by Seton Medical Center by Dr. Barry Chaucer to make it aware that September 2015 is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men, aside from skin cancer. The American Cancer Society estimates there will be 220,000 new cases of prostate cancer in the U.S. in 2015, resulting in an estimated 27, 540 deaths. It's estimated that 21,000 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer and that 3,180 men in California will die from the disease. African-American men have the highest rate of prostate cancer and their death rate in the U.S. is more than twice that of any other ethnic group. Early prostate cancer usually has no symptoms and it runs in the family. Studies show that diet high in processed meat and dairy foods may be a risk factor and obesity appears to be a risk, to increase the risk of aggressive prostate cancer. Survival rates approach 100% when diagnosed early, but drops quickly to 28% when it spreads to other parts of the body. Treatment options for prostate cancer vary on a man's age, stage, and grade of his cancer, as well as other existing medical conditions. And the American Cancer Society, and this is the important part, recommends that men should have an opportunity to make an informed decision about whether to be tested for prostate cancer based on their personal values and preferences. Brisbane joins with other communities across our nation to increase the awareness about the importance for men to make an informed decision with their healthcare provider about early detection and testing for prostate cancer. And now, therefore, it is resolved that Brisbane designates September 2015 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And then we will move on to item B, which is a presentation from South San Francisco Scavengers Trash Container Management Team.
Thank you, Mayor O'Connell and members of the council. I'm not sure how to switch these slides. Do we have a clicker? Oh, thank you. Gotcha. Thank you, Sherry. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Oh, my name is Paul Formosa. I'm sorry. I'm the CFO of the South San Francisco Scavenger Company. And I'd like to thank you very much for the opportunity to make this presentation tonight about our new trash container management policy. I'd just like to introduce a couple of our team members who are here tonight. Mike Uglieamoni and Sabrina Bortoli. They have been very involved in this project since it started last year and they will be very much involved in it going forward. And before I forget, I'd like to thank Sabrina for doing this PowerPoint for us tonight. She did a fantastic job. We have two other members of our team here tonight to illustrate the point. We have Rocky Raccoon and his little brother Robbie.
Perhaps they should go on the podium so the public can see them.
Just not sure they'll stand still for that, but...
They probably see him enough.
Oh, there you go.
We'll add cuteness factor to this presentation.
It's important to realize what our goal is here and is to put these poor guys...
He could fall over.
Let them fall and find a new source of food. But anyway, this project started probably about a year ago, I believe, when we were negotiating the new franchise agreement. And we had been working closely with city staff since that time to develop the policy, the materials that we're going to use for public education and to implement the policy. And the implementation is about to begin. And it started with discussions about stormwater and so forth. And there have been many discussions between us and the city. The city, of course, is under several mandates to reduce litter flowing into our storm drains and therefore into our bay and ultimately into the ocean. This policy is one step in that effort. Other efforts have also been made, such as handpicking litter from the major streets in town, as well as increased street sweeping and so forth. These things are all designed to reduce litter ending up in the storm drains and capture devices, by the way, too, in the storm drains themselves. And these things are all intended to keep the litter out of the waterways. And so, this is one more source of litter that occurs during the collection or presentation of trash and recycling on our streets. And so this policy's been developed in order to help combat that. I printed this too small, so now I'm going to need my glasses. So this policy is designed to address litter issues that may be related to overfilling garbage and recycling containers, especially containers with their lids left open, not only on collection day, but on other days as well. And not just toders, but the, but containers that are used at businesses, the larger dumpsters and so forth. The, it's also, another source of litter is accumulation of trash in trash enclosures that you see basically in most state businesses. And also, again, what we're trying to avoid here is litter ending up in the streets, roadways, and storm drains. The regulatory agencies have imposed litter reduction goals of 70% by 2017 and 100% by 2020. So in order to meet that goal again, the trash, this new trash container management policy. And of course, we are trying to reduce our litter. It's not just unsightly. It's bad for the environment. And so, and to meet the regulatory goals. So how the program works is we'll be monitoring containers and waste areas closely. We'll be issuing notices of noncompliance, identifying litter problems that may need to be addressed through service adjustments. Service adjustments can include things like either making sure that lids are closed and perhaps in some cases, larger containers might be needed. In the case of commercial businesses, perhaps more frequent collections. But basically, we want to focus on the issue and find solutions to those problems. Here's a couple of examples of, here's one example of what we don't want to see. That's lids that are open with material hanging out of the lids. They must be closed completely. That will help keep Robbie and Rocky out of the containers. Also, placing them at the curb further apart will also help keep other critters out of the containers as well. But when there is material hanging out of the top like that, as you can see in the picture on the left, there is a potential there for wind to blow materials out of those containers. So what you want to see is the containers such as they are in the other picture, where they're completely closed at all times. The program requirements are that all materials must be placed inside and not spilling out. Not as you see here in these two examples. This is fairly typical, actually, and the sort of thing that we're trying to eliminate. We didn't stage that picture. We actually found it like that on collection day. Exactly what we're trying to avoid. If the wind had come along while this container was laying on its side before the truck gets there, then that will end up all over the neighborhood. And of course, Rocky there, he's got his little saying. By the way, as long as we're on the subject of recycling trucks, we'd just like to dispel a myth that seems to be persistent about the recycling trucks themselves. There's an impression out there with some people that, that why do they separate the materials in their recycling cans into the two sides? Containers on one side and paper products on the other side? When it appears to all go into one truck and just get mixed together, so what's the point of sorting it? The picture of the container itself, you can see the lid is very heavy. Everyone who's got one is familiar with that. And the reason for the heavy lid is that when the truck turns the container over, it directs the materials from those two streams into two different compartments of the truck, which you can see on this slide. The trucks that we use for recycling have two doors on the back. One, the containers end up on one side of the truck and the paper ends up on the other side of the truck. If you look carefully, although the trucks are made by the same company and so they look very similar, the recycling truck is distinguished by the gap between the two doors. And there's another picture there of one of the trucks unloading in the transfer station. You can see that there's a separate door there. So we thought that we would throw that in here just to talk about that just for a second. The educational outreach that we're going to be doing is, and we distributed copies of this to each of the council members and we had some extra copies for staff, but this flyer will be in the invoices that went out, well, they're either going out today or yesterday, to all the residents and to businesses. There's a separate one for a commercial. And you have copies of both there for your review. And so these flyers are going out soon. They'll be followed in about two weeks, about the week of the 14th, with a letter being sent to each address, every service address, commercial and residential, to outline the plan. And then, starting October the 1st, we will start with actual enforcement of the policy. And that will, one of the things we'll be using is this container tag. We will use in situations where the container is not fully closed or there is trash around it. It'll look, it'll be bigger than this. I gave you each a printout of the language that will be on it. This is a sample from one of our sister companies of what they use. And the advantage to this particular tag is it has a gum strip in it so that we can wrap it around the handle of the toder and it won't blow away and contribute to the problem instead of, you know, trying to fight the problem. So it will look about like this, except for we'll have the language that we distributed in the copy that you've got in front of you. And so with this policy, we'll be encouraging compliance with the policy, to keep containers closed, keep the right size container. And there'll be three different steps to encouraging compliance with the policy. First will be, we will service the container as usual with a note that we had a situation and please comply. We'll send a letter. The second time it happens at the same address, we will also service the container because we don't want to leave it behind and contribute to the problem some more. And so, but there will be an automatic fee charged for the second violation. The third notice, we will also service the container, but only after we contact the customer and by phone and get ahold of them and tell them, hey, you've got, this is your third notice and you really need to start complying with the program. So of course, we'll be working with the customers to find solutions. But that is, that's the heart of the matter right there. The containers will be tagged by the driver or by a supervisor and we'll be setting out letters of the notification as well as using the toder notices. For residential, the fee involved is $30. For a multiple unit residential, it'll be $30 plus an extra trip fee if there's that much trash there. And for commercial, the same way. The fee is intended to cover the expense of operating the policy. There'll be a lot of staff time involved, extra driver time and so forth. So it's basically to cover the labor costs involved. We'll also be sending out letters and so forth, so there are some expenses there that are involved that the fee is intended to cover. And lastly, we also have another new policy that we've started recently. And if you don't mind, just take a moment to explain our covered load policy. That is also, this trash management policy here in Brisbane inspired us to start another policy at the transfer station for those that are bringing their own trash to the transfer station in South San Francisco, that all loads must be covered, must be secured. And I've included in your packet a copy of the flyer that we've been giving the self-haul customers. This started in July the 1st. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to get the word out that if you're going to drive, if you're going to clean out your garage and load up a pickup truck that's not covered, please stop at the local hardware store first. Get yourself a tarp and a piece of rope and tie it down and cover it up. Because if not, there's a $20 extra fee involved for the street cleaning that we have to do with the wind-blown litter that comes out of the back of trucks as they're transporting material to the transfer station. And so that will also help keep the streets clean and tidy, hopefully. And not only in Brisbane, but in the surrounding areas too. So that's another policy that we've recently started. We wanted to take a moment to talk about.
I have one question on that. If a resident were to have a couch, let's say, or a chair, that would need to be covered as well, not just loose debris.
It would need to be contained. So in that case, if it was just the couch, probably just tying it down would be good enough. However, if there's cushions involved and so forth and smaller pieces of the couch that could potentially fly out, then yes, we would want them to cover it. Yes.
Good to know. Thank you.
And I think that about covers it. I want to thank you very much for your time. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. I have some questions.
Sure.
So I'm glad to see that you're doing this. I live up at the ridge and I see a lot of neighbors overfilling their containers and it is quite windy up there. So I think that it'll be very helpful to make sure that people comply there. So you mentioned that on the compliance, that you would continue to do the pickup even with the notices that go out, but on a third notice, you would contact them and pick up the bins or empty their bins only after you've reached them? So what happens if you're unable to reach them? Will the trucks service the bins?
Yes. We are hoping to be able to get in contact with people real time so that we can send the driver back the same day. That's our intention.
And how are you contacting them? By, do you have phone numbers?
We have the phone numbers for most people.
Okay.
In the case, we expect to have that problem mostly in the commercial area.
Okay.
In the residential area, we may, we may not be able to follow that exactly. Simply because people are most likely at work. But we expect, we expect in the residential areas, we're hoping anyway, that people will respond to steps one and two and not have to go as far as three. Because I think that people are a little, there's less people involved in a residential situation. In a commercial situation, we may send out letters and we may have flyers on the containers, but they may not come to the attention of the right person until we make a phone call.
Right. I think it's more of an educational outreach at the...
Yes, exactly.
In the residential section.
Exactly.
And are you doing this trash container management policies? Is this something you're rolling out in other cities as well?
This is the first city that's asked us to do this sort of thing. And so this is basically, I don't want to call it a private project, but this is definitely step one. And we want to work the bugs out of it here. There's some technological issues that we're still working on that we want to get those smoothed out. And once we've settled on a more high-tech method of implementing the policy where we can push a button on the truck, get a picture, and it downloads to the customer's account and so forth, and we can send the letters out kind of automatically, that would be the ideal situation. And we will get there. We have technology in mind. It's just not quite ready yet. But it should be ready by the end of the year. At least that's what the engineers told us. So we're keeping our fingers crossed. But, but once we do do that, then yes, we intend to go to our other two cities, Millbrae and South San Francisco, and ask them to follow the same policy as well. Because we think it's overall, it's a good idea.
Well, they're going to have to.
And the covered...
They have the same issues.
And the covered load policy, how is that going to be enforced? Because I can imagine if people have contractors at their homes, you know, who don't necessarily live in town and aren't aware of the policies, how are you going to make them aware and how would you even enforce that?
Well, one of the reasons I brought it up tonight was to try and increase awareness. Basically, it's enforced when the vehicle arrives at our facility and they're told immediately that their load is not up to par if it's not and asked to go and get a tarp and come back. Most people don't do that. They'd rather pay the $20 for some reason. Maybe they buy the tarp on the way home. But we have seen, in the time that we've been doing it, which is about, actually, we really started enforcing it full-time about six weeks now. And there's been a big change in the number of vehicles coming in covered as opposed to uncovered. So it's really, it's really making a lot of progress. We're very, very pleased with the result, actually. It's been a little difficult for some people to understand, but, and it is a state law, actually, that all loads must be covered, must be contained. Well, not necessarily covered. I think the state law says contained. But we're trying to be, we have to do something that we can enforce across the board. And so we're looking for covered and contained. It's, otherwise you get into a... Well, that guy didn't have a cover. Why do I have to have one? You know, that sort of thing. So plain and simple, covered and contained.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for your time.
I'm sure Professor Summan, I do too, so go ahead.
Well, thank you, Professor Summan Miller. Thanks for the presentation, Paul.
You're welcome.
So some people in town, their raccoons are smarter than other raccoons in town. So I have some neighbors that they need to bungee cord their lids. So are you guys coming out with better improved cans to combat Rocky and Robbie?
Yes, the bungee cords are a problem because then the driver's got to get out and unhook them before he can actually dump the container. So, and yes, we have had discussions with staff as well about better containers. There is one that's coming out of the market that we are hoping to implement here as soon as possible. But it only comes in one size. It's only a 32-gallon size. But it has a locking lid that you lock by turning a big dial on the top. And when the truck picks it up and flips it over, then it will unlock. But if it falls over only a 90-degree angle versus a 180, it will not unlock. And so, at least that's what they say. We want to give it a try. We had a prototype. We broke it in five minutes. Close the lid with the lock lock. Boom, that broke it. But they assured us that was just the 3D printer model, not the production model. And so we hope that that will help. And so, yes, we are keeping an eye out for better containers with better lids. But we do have issues with either putting a brick on top or a bungee cord or that sort of thing. The bricks are going to end up gone because they're going to get lifted up with the truck and they're going to go right inside. Bungee cords may or may not survive the process. So, yeah, those are a problem. We don't encourage that.
If I could, Ray, you know, Paul, they're okay as long as you take them off before the truck comes.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yes, because, you know, that's kind of the discipline that people have to do is to make sure that they unlatch it, you know, when they set their can out in the morning. As long as you keep that spacing, you should be okay. But what happens is when the critters get on top of one can, they open the lid on the other one. They haven't figured out the big one, the 96-gallon can. They're working towards it.
That's what the good stuff is.
The other thing is that if you're also using the green waste container properly, you're not going to have the good fragrant food products in your gray bin where they're not going to try to get into that one.
Yes, no, this is true. But, you know, the packaging, the food packaging, it's hard to clean it and then you just put that into your gray can.
Yeah.
But you're right. Most of the good stuff does, should go into the green waste bin. So my other question for you, Paul, is that, you know, as Councilmember Lou mentioned, it gets windy. And so sometimes the cans blow over. If a can is knocked over by the wind, do the drivers come by and they pick up the can and put it in the truck? It doesn't stay on the, on the street that way?
No, they still need to collect the material, yes. They may not get every last scrap of paper. That's, that can be the issue.
Okay. Yeah, I know. They're on a time crunch and trying to do the best they can.
Well, things start blowing around before they get there, then. They do try to pick up what's in the immediate area. We do have situations where if we have a big storm, this happened, well, it's been a while now since we've had a big storm.
It's always on a Thursday night.
But they're on their way, I've heard, yes. Where we've had a lot of blown-over cans and so forth. And what we've, what we've done several times is take, we have our own street sweeper that we use in our facility. Whoops, take it easy there, Rocky. And we've taken that street sweeper out on the road and go sweep the streets after the collection, just if it's really that bad. So there's been a few instances where we've had to do that.
Okay. And then you guys still offer that multi-container pickup twice a year? twice a year?
The, um-
Like you'd have-
Extra pickup.
Extra pickup.
The on-call bulk cleanup, yes.
So, uh, but, you know, all of us only have one gray container and then the other, we may, might use, uh, one of the old school containers or a box or something like that. So how does that apply to, you know, keeping things down? Uh, because you don't have that, that opportunity?
Well, that's a good point. Um, what we are hoping for there is that people will, there are times when trash is put out in bags. And, um, we just need a little, a, a little help there that you don't put things in the bags that are going to attract, uh, these kind of guys or dogs or something like that who, who may rip the bags open. Um, and so hopefully food type items will go in the regular containers, um, and that those on-call cleanups will be limited mostly to hopefully just regular trash that won't attract animals. Because if the bags are out on the street and they're closed and no, nothing rips them apart, then we have no problem.
Okay.
But, uh, there is potential there for, uh, a problem outside of the program, yes. Um, one other thing that we did work with city staff on was placement of, uh, used motor oil. Um, that's also outside the container. Generally speaking, it really cannot go inside the container. So that's another exception, uh, to the rule. Uh, used motor oil needs to be in a sealed plastic container, um, with a, a screw cap, uh, s- like a Clorox bottle, that sort of thing, or a, uh, soap bottle. So that it, um, it won't spill either, uh, at the point of collection or on the ride back. So it, cause it has to be placed in a, in a rack outside the truck and it can't be put inside because then it will be, uh, it will leak into the rest of the trashing.
Mm-hmm.
That's not good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a couple of observations. We've sort of talked about this before, but, um, you know, the, the trash bins, if, for people who are actually using the yard kitchen waste option, are getting less and less material in them because a lot of what used to go in the trash bin now goes into the green bin.
Yes.
Um, but one of the problems is that there's still a number of people who haven't sort of caught on yet. Uh, and I know we're gonna eventually start with the businesses doing that as well. So I was just thinking that maybe some of the m- material that you're sending out with this and informing people and so forth, it might be useful to also remind them, you know, to put their kitchen waste and all this kind of stuff that they used to put in the trash can actually go in the green bin. So they don't have to put it in the trash. So a lot of, uh, overfilled tr- trash cans or trash bins, you know, just won't be overfilled anymore when they have two bins to put them in. So, uh, as a part of the education program, it would seem to me that, you know, try to get those people who haven't quite caught up yet to the, to the new regime, so to speak. And that would reduce the, uh, the trash issue, I would think. Um, then there's, uh, another thing that strikes me is that when, the only time that our trash bin is overfilled is when neighbors decide to use our trash bin. Uh, and so, you know, and we don't get up very early in the morning. So we wouldn't have any idea, uh, until, you know, we discover later. And so then you don't, it seems unfortunate for somebody to get sighted for something that they didn't do in the first place. Uh, and so, and you don't even know which neighbors.
Right.
Uh, and so that's a kind of an issue. And maybe there ought to be some kind of, you know, sort of qualification saying, you know, and you know, someone actually is putting in stuff in your bin and so forth and so on. You need to have that as kind of an appeal process. And you don't want to advertise that too much, but I think it's, that kind of flexibility needs to be a part of the program. Cause sometimes it isn't actually done by the people who are putting the bins out. It's somebody else.
No, I understand. And, and let me assure you that, um, uh, we work with our customers. We can be flexible, obviously. Um, really the, the, the $30 fee is more of an attention getter than anything else. And so, um, in a lot of cases, uh, you know, we will, of course, um, listen to the customers and see what the situation is and then try to find a solution rather than, uh, enforce the fee, if that's the case. So we will definitely be working with the customers on, on those sort of issues, is to the extent that we can. Um, so there would, there will obviously be, there will have to be. And there will be flexibility in, in those sort of situations, definitely. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. I knew that, but wanted to hear you say it.
Absolutely. I understand.
Uh, and the third thing is, we've talked about this before too, and you were talking about, you know, redesigned bins. Um, some of the tall, thin bins are really top-heavy. Uh, and it doesn't take much of a wind to blow them over. Uh, and, you know, that's not the residents' fault. They've got the proper amount of stuff in there and they got it properly located and the wind comes along and kaplooey, you know? And sometimes it's just the lid that gets blown back, uh, cause they're very light on those tall, thin bins. Or sometimes it's the whole bin that gets knocked over by the wind. And so there, I think, uh, that's another part of the search for the better bin.
Yes.
And, and so, you know, I don't think people should be held responsible for something, again, that they don't have control over.
Well, again, certainly we'll have to be flexible. Um, we're not looking at this as an opportunity to go and, uh, collect a whole new revenue stream. Um, certainly if there's a big storm and a lot of bins are blown over, uh, that, that's clearly not the day for enforcement. Um, however, uh, on the other hand, if it's a situation where you've got one person whose bin is always blown over and nobody else's is, then maybe you gotta look for a different solution.
Then you can make a judgment call.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
So, and, and I agree with you. Some of the, the smaller bins are not, um, as stable as you would hope they would be. Um, and so certainly when we, uh, try this new bin, that'll be one of the things we'll be looking at. Well, I haven't seen it myself. Um, but it's probably, yeah, I thought there was somebody standing right behind me. I'm sorry. But, uh, it will be, uh, something that we'll be considering, certainly. Uh, the new 20-gallon bin that we use now is pretty stable.
Yes, we have one of those and they are much better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a very stable little-
Right, yeah. So, you know, the design, it's amazing what good design can do.
Yes. Uh, the original, uh, bins were, um, toders were designed more for, well, more for an eye for where can the truck grab them? Cause they had a certain height that they needed to be. And so they made them smaller by making them narrower.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, unfortunately, some are not as stable as others. Um, the ones that we've been using were pretty good. Um, there's, there's worse ones out there, believe it or not. Um, but, uh, yeah, there's, there's room for improvement.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Anyway, I'm glad you're doing this and, uh, it's a part of a appropriate program to, you know, clean up the environment. And that's very positive, but we have to do it in a, you know, fair and pragmatic way.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other question?
Did you have any questions?
Question.
Thanks, Paul.
I just wanted to, uh, point out that the notice one, notice two, and notice three is over a six-month period. So, um, if people forget after six months and get a second notice, it won't be, um, held against them, so to speak. Um, when I leave first thing in the morning before the trucks come on Thursdays and Fridays, I consistently see probably 20% of the cans that I see are overflowing of one of their three cans. And, um, I know it gets worse during the holidays or when someone has a party and that I, I do think it's gonna be a learning curve and, and that neighbors who see that should let their neighbors know in a very polite way that, you know, that's gonna get them in trouble, um, so that it doesn't go as far. It, it, and it corrects the problem before it gets to you guys. So hopefully we can get the word out and we have it on social media and try to get it where people know what's going on instead of, you know, first notice. Your poor drivers are gonna be putting a, a sticker on every other can. So-
Yeah, we, we will probably, uh, do one street at a time at first and try not to, um, blanket the entire town with notices in, in one week. So we will, uh, we'll, we'll bite it off one chunk at a time, but we will get there.
Good. Awareness usually helps. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Brings us to all communications, number one. Are there, I have no slips. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the council on an item not on the agenda? And I am seeing no hands. So we'll move on to the consent calendar, which is item A to adopt ordinance number 598, waiting the second reading, amending title 18 of the Brisbane Municipal Code concerning Marina regulations.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And old business, item A to consider approval of the response letter to the grand jury flooding ahead, planning for sea level, level rise. And do we have a staff report?
Yes, ma'am. Honorable members of the town council members, good evening. So this item is being brought back to you having first been seen at its August 20th meeting. At that time, the council had a number of concerns, suggestions about how the letter could perhaps have, um, some stylistic changes to it. So it was referred to an ad hoc subcommittee that in, included council members Lou and Miller. Staff and the council members met on August the 25th. And the attached letter is, uh, staff's understanding of what the subcommittee wanted placed into the letter is what they are recommending the full council approve before it's set along to the grand jury.
Would the subcommittee like to make a comment?
Um, we met and, uh, generally, uh, we didn't really have any, uh, disagreement with the staff recommendations. Uh, and so those are consistent. Uh, what we wanted to do was to do two things. Uh, one was to, uh, bring in some of the more recent scientific evidence in reference to sea level rise, which we have done. Uh, and, and the second was to make a stronger case for, uh, considering CCAG as the countywide organization. And both of those things are in the language and I hope you like the language. And I don't know whether Laurie wants to add to that, but, but we're comfortable with, with the new language now.
Sure. And we also added language recognizing the countywide efforts or the, the efforts, I should say, at the various levels of government, um, by, um, Congresswoman Jackie Speer, Dave Pine, and Rich Gordon also to, um, have some countywide, uh, look at the issue. So that language is included in there as well.
Right.
I would like to also comment that we did send a letter to the cha- grand jury to inform them that, that we were a day, going to be a day late on our report because of our council meeting. And I, um, don't think that we, um, got a response from that letter, but I'm assuming they accepted it and there will be no repercussions from that. So in-
Motion to approve letter of response to the grand jury.
All right. You know, just, just real quick, um, I want to say that, that you did an excellent job redoing the letter. Uh, I, I, you know, I'm just reading the response. To me, it, it seemed it had better flow and it showed that we are serious about this and that we want to be a partner with, within the region as a whole, but also addressing the concerns that we as a council have. So I thought you guys did a great job working with staff to, I mean, what we're presenting is a better, a better package than, than the original. So, good job. And I'll second that.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And very nice job.
Thank you. I, I have one suggestion in terms of distribution. Um, obviously it goes to the grand jury, but since we are strongly supporting CCAG, I think we ought to, uh, with a cover letter, send to the staff and the chair of CCAG and say, since we are, you know, really taking a strong stand in reference to the role of CCAG, we thought we would share this with you. Something like, to that effect.
Good idea. I don't think we need to burden that.
No, I think everyone's comfortable with it and, yep.
Okay. New business, item A to consider adoption of resolution 2015-37, establishing a policy concerning requests for legal services by council committees or individual council members. Staff report, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as part of the council's budget process, council indicated it would like to consider a policy by which, uh, individual council members, as well as council committees, could request the city attorney to provide a certain number of, uh, hours of legal service without necessarily receiving authorization from the full city council itself. During the budget process, there seemed to be consensus that that number of hours, uh, ought to be five with respect to a specific legal issue, but the council referred the matter to the council policy committee, uh, council members Miller and Lentz for a, a recommendation. The committee met on August 19th, uh, discussed the, the proposed policy and, uh, had now recommends that the policy be, uh, adopted, uh, setting the number of hours, uh, at five for any one legal issue. And the reason for that, I think, is, is twofold. Number one, uh, at least during my tenure, I have not received many, um, individual requests from council members to do, uh, much legal research on questions that he or she might have. And the ones I have received have all been able to be done within a, a very short period of time. Secondly, with respect to the committees, although there has been some particular work that sort of triggered this whole discussion, I think that as a general principle, committees do not typically generate, uh, requests for extensive legal services. And so to the extent that committees might in the future do that, this policy would be able to, uh, get a handle on that so that there isn't extensive time spent on projects that the full council is not, uh, in, in favor of, or think that that would be time well spent. Um, one of the things the committee did ask, uh, or ans- uh, added at the very end had to do with the number of requests per month, um, so that we wouldn't run a situation where a, a particular council member, not on this council necessarily, but, you know, sometime in the future, uh, was not continually asking for legal requests from the city attorney's office, which cumulative could, you know, require a lot of additional work. So as a result of that, uh, the recommendation was that that number of requests be capped at three and additional requests would be, uh, would need the full council approval. Uh, Councilmember Lou, um, I think correctly, uh, asked for some clarification concerning that. And, uh, her, her questions had to do with whether or not the three requests, uh, whether they take more than five hours each or three requests at all. And she was asking whether or not the limit applies cumulative between committees and council members. For example, if a council committee makes three requests, could a council member who sits on the committee make an additional request? And, uh, what if two different council committees on which the same council member sits makes a separate request? Um, because, uh, the, the, the policy committee, we didn't quite get into that kind of detail at the, uh, at the meeting.
I am a lawyer, I think of these things.
I, I gave, I gave council, yeah. I gave councilmember Lou my opinion as to what that meant, but I, I basically kicked it back to the, uh, committee to perhaps weigh in on what, uh, what your thoughts were. And once I, once we have that and the council agrees, we'll incorporate that into the policy. And if I haven't exactly stated your question correct, uh, councilmember, please correct me. I'll ask for any questions the council has about the policy as proposed.
All right. I just think it's the spirit of what it is without being overly detailed. I don't think we need to get into that level of detail. I think it's the spirit of what the policy is, is, uh, um, really just trying to control the cost without getting out there too far. And I, I think that's probably what you're looking at from control situation because, I mean, we could really boil this down. Like, can I give my five hours to somebody else or something like that, you know? Uh, so they can have 10 hours or, you, you know what I mean? To, to have them address that. And, and I don't think-
I, I think if-
I don't think we want to get-
If one council member is making that many requests, that it becomes an issue. We just need to take them off some subcommittees.
Have fewer subcommittees. Well, I, I think that it would be nice to have clarification as to my first question, um, about whether it's whether any council member makes more than three requests in any month or three requests totaling more than five hours each. Because I can imagine, you know, we have a, a good number of subcommittees and if they require legal assistance, if you're asking the city attorney to answer three questions that take, you know, a- asking the city attorney to answer three questions that take, you know, a few minutes each, then it seems burdensome to me to, to cap it at three for a whole month if they're only, like, totaling an hour. I think having it, having some language in there that says, you know, estimated to take more than a total of five hours for those three questions, that would be helpful, because right now it is vague. That's in section four.
I can add that language if that's acceptable, because again, it certainly is possible that within, you know, a given month, I might get a request, or more than three requests from a council member, but if each of those only take, you know, 15 or 20 minutes to do, it's not a big problem. The problem would become if, you know, each of them, those requests are taking four and a half hours, you know, then, you know, I think the red flag has to go up, and there has to be a discussion about that. But I think we can, we could clarify, I could clarify the, the policy if it's acceptable to the council, that it really is three requests that's estimated to take more than five hours each.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. Yeah, that makes sense.
With the spirit of that language, I, I think that I'd be comfortable approving this if we had language that, that related that spirit of that timeframe, which I'm trying to.
Well, you know, I, I mean, there was what we had in mind, we weren't talking about, you know, just giving the city attorney a call and talking to him for 10 minutes, and that counts as a request. Now, we were thinking of somebody who was asking for considerable amount of city attorney time, and going up to the limit, and then doing it multiple times, and pretty soon, you know, you really got a lot of hours and all. That's the only thing we were thinking about, and it was just kind of a fantasy of, what if we ended up with a council member like that sometime in the future, you know, because we were thinking, as said in the staff report, that, you know, things change over time, but the policies stay around for a long while, and so we just didn't want to set up where it was easy to, quote, game the system. So this kind of clarification would, would take care of that, I think.
I get it. You know, 18 years that I've spent on the council, I don't think I recall anybody.
Anybody doing that, no.
Yeah.
So it's highly unlikely, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, there have been councils, and the Harbor District Commission, you know, for example, someone.
Oh, things could.
I'm sure there, I'm sure there's some council people that ask more of the city attorney than others, you know, it's just been my experience, you know, but it's never been excessive, so.
Yeah, no, we never had that problem in Brisbane, I agree.
Yes.
But we could get a litigious council person.
You could.
That wanted to.
It's possible.
Or would cause or trigger those problems.
Right.
So what is our pleasure? Do we want to wait for voting?
Add that little bit of language.
The city attorney said it's fine.
Yeah.
It's okay with lying.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's your.
That's a motion.
Or I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You know, before we go on to the next, I don't, Madam Mayor, Michael, so in, in our policy, some of the meeting, we also dealt with some other policy issues. When are you planning to bring those back, or bring those before the council?
I will be, be bringing those back. One of them, of course, is a, has to do with the appeals process, and the other one having to do with the issue of council members addressing advisory bodies. I'm working on, there was some suggested language change on both of those. I wanted to redraft that, reconvene the committee to make sure that I had captured the comments of the committee correctly. I would expect, because I'm going to be gone, I expect to do that in October, and then bring it back to the full council in October or November.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
And that brings us to item B, consider approval of plans and specifications and authorization of the publication of notice inviting bids of construction of the Brisbane Boulevard South Sewer Force Main Project, project number 9F07. Staff report, please.
Yes ma'am, good evening once again. So the project that we're requesting your consent to advertise for receipt of bids tonight is the undergrounding of an eight-inch diameter high-density polyethylene line that was placed in an interim emergency location above ground 12 years ago. So we're happy to finally be getting to the point where we can take this pipe and put it underground, where it'll be much safer from any potential accidents and such. Seated to my left is a gentleman who's going to help me with any difficult questions you may have on the plans and specifications. This is Jerry Flanagan. Jerry was one of the first hires I made 14 years ago. We hired him originally as an associate engineer, he's now a senior civil engineer in charge of all of your water sewer and storm drain utility systems, and with that, staff would be happy to take any questions.
All right, go ahead.
I did, I guess, Jerry, well, this isn't really a difficult question, it's just more of a clarification. We currently have a, an existing 12-inch line that's underground, is that right?
That's correct.
And so this will run parallel the eight-inch, and eight-inch is mainly, as you said, Randy, for overflow, that we had maybe like in 1997, something like that, excess.
So, yes, so we have two series of pump trains that work out there. The way you typically design the pump station, the way Valley Drive was designed, is that you have a series of large pumps, and you have a series of small pumps, and they are set up that way because you have different flow scenarios that are occurring throughout the day. So oftentimes, your sewer station is inundated a couple of times during the day. It's inundated in the morning when everybody gets up and uses their bathrooms and uses their kitchens, and then a couple hours after that, that flow all comes into the station. And then that, the same sort of thing happens again in the evening, as people come home and people shower. And then, of course, the most infamous time that it's inundated is shortly after halftime for the Super Bowl, because that's when all of the restrooms in the entire country are being utilized at the same time. So there's a tremendous amount of flow, and we're laughing about it intentionally, but it's really, that's really a true story. That is the time, that is the maximum day with a heavy rain attached to it that, that people see. So because you've got these different pump sizes that have different capacities, you actually have two different discharge lines that are coming out of the station, and their size to accommodate the different flows and the different pressures that those pumps associated. So the eight-inch one has always been in use for the flows, it's accommodated for, the 12-inch always for it. But it was, the eight-inch was originally put in as an emergency bypass, as we were waiting to get the design done and the construction started for Valley Drive. For a while there, we had a rental standby pump that was placed in the old Valley Drive site, in its facility, and it was intended to guarantee that if we had a high-flow condition, that we were not going to discharge untreated primary raw sewage into the bay.
Okay. Just one other thing on, and this is kind of related, but with our storm drainage, you know, like a 100-year storm, I know in the past, we, we're getting a lot of storm drain water into the sewage, and, you know, we pay for that, by the gallon, I guess, or whatever. You got a meter, it's metered, right? So how, how are we right now? I know we've been in a drought, but do we think that we, percentage-wise, got this whittled down pretty good?
You know, I think we have. We've, we've really made great leaps and bounds in cutting down on, the characteristics you're talking about are what we call inflow and infiltration. One of them is a result of illegal connections, which would be when people have their, their stormwater downspout leaders from their gutters, that somehow ended up getting connected to the sewer. And the other one is a condition that when rainwater hits the streets, it comes down, and the overwhelming majority of our sewer system is not pressure tight, so you've got manholes that have holes in them, and water flows into it, and then you also have holes in the pipe in the ground. When we designed our system, we designed it for a factor of five, but I think the highest that we're seeing is a factor of three, Jerry? Yeah, we're, so, and that's, we've got really good standards based on that, so we've, we've made great bounds. I think before I came here, you, the council had approved to go out and smoke test the system, and that, and that was, what they were, what you do there is you go through your sewer line, and you intentionally put smoke into it, and then you look to see if it's coming out near people's houses, or coming out of their gutter system, so, yeah. It used to be very common years ago, because you had to do it, because a lot of those illegal connections had been done, but, no, we're, we're in pretty good shape, but we're, I think we're both pretty content with where we are now.
And if this ends up being a wet El Nino like 97, we'll really see.
Oh, absolutely, sure, absolutely, yeah. It's, it's, one of the things that Jerry and I do is we track the water and sewer flow every, every two months, so that, because that's consistent with our billing cycle. And you can take the amount of water we use, create a graph, and overlay max average temperature SFO, and you can get those graphs to align perfectly. And you can do nearly the same thing with rainfall and sewer. They just, it just works that way, that's how we, that's, that's the big things that increase us. If it gets hot, people use more water. If it rains, we see more sewage flow. Those are by far the, the things that take us off average.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Jerry? If others don't, I have.
I do not.
Okay. Just an observation that this project is a part of our agreed-upon capital improvement program.
Yes, sir.
Which, there is a surcharge on the water and sewer bill in order to pay for it, and obviously, we have a temporary sewer line that has lasted for a lot longer than temporary lines are supposed to last, so this puts it underground, which makes it much better, and so it's a part of our regular maintenance of our sewer system, and that should be clear to everybody.
Yes, sir. Thank you for noting that, sir.
Secondary, I think it also would be interesting, the staff report talks about it, taking it, lifting it up from Valley to Guadalupe Canyon, which is, of course, the temporary pipe that we're replacing with an underground pipe, but where does it go then?
Sure, so it's, it's interesting, we call it a lift station, and I'm not sure sometimes why the distinction is, but with sewage and storm drain, we're always lifting the product, and with water, we're always pumping it. So this is a lift station, and what it does is it lifts the sewage from the low elevation that you have in Valley Drive to the manhole that's in Bejure Boulevard at its intersection with Guadalupe Canyon Parkway. It then discharges into a 16-inch line, which is one of the few pressurized sewer mains that we have in the city, that stays in Bejure Boulevard in the southbound lanes, all the way down to our northern city limits. At our northern city limits, it connects with the San Francisco Public Utility Commission's Transmission Interceptor. It's then, from there, pumped along, it goes out to their Southeast Water Quality Control Plant, which is out in Hunter's Point, and that's where the sewage is treated, under a license agreement with San Francisco.
And we, as Clark was mentioning, and we get charged for that based on how much you should say measure?
Yes, sir. It's, it's based on flow, exactly correct.
Right, okay. So I just want to make sure that people have the whole picture, this is a part of a bigger system.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
One of the things I noticed in the, in the drawings, and there was this very technical term, potholes.
Seasonal traffic calming devices, sir.
But anyway, I noticed that, it said the last time that this was analyzed was in 2007.
Yeah.
So is that going to be an issue when a contractor comes along and says, well, you know, there's all these new things that have happened in the last eight years or so, is that going to be an issue?
No, sir, we, we think those are, those are common terms, and we don't think there is enough change to that. We've obviously gone through and looked at it in detail, and certainly part of the negotiation we did as we were going back with the, the design engineer, BKF, was that they had completed the project '07?
'07.
And so we're trying to revise it eight years later now, and not expense a lot of money, but we, the reach is only 2,100 feet, so we have enough familiarity with that, we can practically walk it on it. Well, Jerry's a 50 and 100 miler marathon or so, and.
Good, I know that.
It's, it's not even a good warm-up for him, it's not even a cool-down. So, but we can, we can observe that pretty quickly and ascertain whether there were changes or not, so we've done that with staff knowledge.
Okay. Then I have two other questions, which are not really related to the project, but they were kind of generated by the project, because, you know, as I've said initially, I think this is a really good project, and we need to do it, and it's a part of our agreed-upon program. But two things just sort of came to mind, one of which was the whole section on asphalt and the repaving, after you tear it up, you have to repave it. And we were reading the Climate Action Plan the other day, several of us, and there's some discussion about the emissions that come from old-time asphalt, and that there's some different kinds of paving materials that we could potentially use that would lower emissions. And so I was just wondering, not for this project, but for others, is, is that a valid presumption that we can do a better job with the paving materials in the future to deal with emissions?
Absolutely. The technology for paving has been evolving really rapidly over the last 10 years, at a much greater pace than I've seen, and one of the projects that Karen Kinser, the Deputy Public Works Director, is going to be preparing and bringing forward to you, is a type of technology that we have not seen before, choosing slightly different mixes that'll, that'll get to, to some of those issues.
Okay, so I was just hoping that, you know, we'll start thinking about that, and that becomes a part of our climate action program.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. The other thing I noticed, it, it looks like when, when the actual sewer pipe comes into the pump station, if I'm reading the chart right, the elevation is pretty close to sea level. And so my, that's, you know, when it gets into the pump station, and, or lift station or whatever. And, and so my concern is, you know, flooding, because if it's that close to the sea level, that means there's a potential for flooding from a big flood, or from a big tidal movement, or from, certainly from sea level rise eventually, and I guess, as I say, this is generated not by this project, but while I just look at the, at the chart and thinking, you know, we may have to think about doing something about that location, or protecting it, or something, I don't know, just, just as a question.
So it, it's a true statement that where the pipe enters the pump station, or exits the pump station, pitting upon whether you're looking at it as a discharge or being reconnected point. It, it's at about sea level, but it's completely buried, it's below ground, and this area is not one of the areas that is identified, even in the pending draft flood insurance rate maps that were just produced by FEMA. In fact, I was, I was at that meeting this morning in Redwood City to discuss those, so this area is still not an area that's anticipated to be subject to flooding. So we're okay with Valley Drive.
Even the pump station?
Yes, sir, the pump station's okay. There's pieces further up that, with Valley Drive, that fled a little bit, but, but not the lift station itself.
Even with sea level rise and tidal surges?
I haven't seen the models for that. Let me, let me parse those out, if I may, because I, I haven't seen the modeling that's being done by the vulnerability study that Samhetao County is participating in, because they haven't picked the scenarios to run it yet, so I can't fairly answer your question for sea level rise. As far as run-up and overland propagation, that was included in the Bay Area Coastal Study that FEMA completed a number of months ago and is rolling out, and it did not show any zones there for that.
Okay.
Unless we have a redo of 82.
Yeah, yeah.
Then it would.
Of course, yeah, I mean, that's what I'm sort of concerned about, and then, of course, the potential for that with sea level rise, it's just going to, the probabilities are going to increase.
That, that's the elephant in the room, sir. I, I think it's sea level rise, and certainly the conversation I've had with the folks doing the vulnerability study is, because they're starting, sort of moving a little slowly for my taste, you know, they're trying to identify assets before they've done the models, and my suggestion to them has been, look, get with the higher-level working group, get with the political folks who are going to be on that high-level policy group, get them to agree to the ranges that you're going to model, and do the model, and then put the model on a map, and then we can all look at it pretty quickly and figure out where our assets are, and which ones we're concerned with. But I really think that's the next step, and I, I've got a pretty high confidence level that they're going to get moving and get that done, so we'll see how it goes.
No, I was just thinking, you were doing the master plan now, and, what, 30 years is, we're kind of looking out in the future, and so we certainly don't want to have the kind of flooding that, that inundates our, you know, main.
Agreed, yes, sir.
Lift station, and, and then we got a really big problem.
Yes, sir.
And so that's the kind of thing, you know, you kind of plan for down the line, and hope that, you know, you're ahead of it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, and we're just a thought that I had.
Appreciate it.
Looking at all the stuff, and I just thought I'd ask, since I knew you'd have an answer. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
Well, I had asked a question of clarification, just for the public's knowledge, about where the pipe will be placed in, in relation to where it is now, and also whether it would necessitate any road closures.
Right, yes, ma'am, you did. The pipe is going to be placed in the southbound lanes of Bejure Boulevard, so that's coming from Guadalupe towards Valley Drive. It's mostly going to be in the bike lane, that's where we're trying to get it, but there are some places where it will have to be in what we call the number-two lane. And the number-two lane means you start at the median, and then you count outboard to the edge of the shoulder, so it's the, what most of us, I guess what most of us would call the slow lane. So it's the slow lane, the bike lane is where it's going to be, and absolutely, there are going to have to be closures that'll be necessitated there. It's a 60 calendar-day project, so not terribly long. We are going to allow the contractor to work during rush hour, in this case, and there are, there's a two-week period where we're allowing him some extended. And there are, there's a two-week period where we're allowing him some extended working hours as we sat down and we thought about that. We, we, with construction, it's always a balance between how long do you want them out there over a calendar period versus how many hours do you want them to work during the day? Because the contractor, what contractors really want to do is they want to come in and they want to work the maximum amount of time possible without letting their guys go into overtime. That, that's how they keep their jobs moving along. They get out there, they get immobilized, they work a full day and they go, they go away. And, and that works for them. So every project, we have the same conversation about what's really gonna serve the, the community and in this case, the traveling public best. And, and it was our judgment that it would be best to get them out of there in, in the shortest number of months. What we found with major thoroughfares like this is we'll put up the advance notices, we'll let people know there's gonna be traffic closure. The first couple of days, it'll be a bloody mess, because people just drive by the changeable message signs. And then the second or third day, they're like, oh, yeah, Bay Shore, not so bueno. We should not go that way. And then the traffic will be fine. And then the contractor will be out of there quickly and we can restore life to normal.
And when do we expect the project to begin?
Mid, mid-October.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So we don't foresee a problem having, um, road closures during the rainy season for this project?
No, ma'am. No, this is a, a fairly simple project to dig. And it, it's always a matter of if there is a heavy rain, you're gonna have to slow down. But the contractor's been required to make his, his work area safe. He'll be putting the concrete K rails out there to protect his work crew and to protect his project. And it, it should be fine.
So we're inviting bids at this point and we, the bidding process is open for how long of period?
Thirty days, ma'am. Thirty days. Thirty days and then we'll bring a contract back to council for your approval.
And you anticipate that a contractor bidding the job would be available in a two-week period to start a project?
Yeah, when I say mid-October, it's, it's within, within October. The month of October will start.
Okay. Because the, the bidding process wouldn't be, um, even completed with a thirty-day bid until October.
Right. Right, right. And, and because of the, the upcoming wet season, we are going to do what we can to, to, uh, speed this along.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, plans and specifications and authorize the publication of notice inviting bids of the construction of Bay Shore Boulevard South Sewer Forest Main Project, project number nine F as in Frank zero seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Staff reports, uh, city managers report on upcoming activities.
I have, uh, two items tonight. And actually, the first one, I'm going to turn over to the city clerk.
So mayor and city council, I'd like to introduce Jolene Helly. Um, she's a, an exchange, um, participant from the city of Burlingame. And she works in the Burlingame Recreation Department. And for the next three months, she's helping out in the city clerk's office and the city manager's office. So you will, you probably already have been receiving communications from her and, um, it's delightful to work with her. And I just wanted to let you know, or that she's here this evening, so.
So you tortured her.
I am torturing her.
We, we torture our interns, we torture our M-TAP people. We make them all come to city council meeting. The second item I have is, um, relative to the, um, community survey that we're doing on the, um, potential Baylands project. There's been a, a few questions that have come in and I want to try to address at least two of those. And also state that we're kind of putting together all the various, um, concerns and complaints that we're getting. And then we're gonna have a subcommittee meeting, um, the end of next week. And we'll be reviewing those items as well as some other issues. So we will be able to be responsive to, uh, the council and to the community on, on all the concerns that are being raised. But there are two, um, issues that I would like to just briefly respond to. And we've responded on social media already on these. The one, uh, the first one is the use of the coding number. Um, there's been some questions about whether or not that is critical to have on the envelope when somebody returns it to, um, to the survey company. And the, uh, the answer is yes, um, because they're necessary to tie the responses back to the registered voters in order to ensure that we know that we're hearing from, uh, city residents, um, who are registered and ensure that, uh, people are not submitting multiple surveys. Uh, the coding numbers are used exclusively by the, um, consulting company and no one at the city or in city hall has access to that information. Uh, it's simply a, um, a control issue for the validity of the survey. And I would also say that, that the, the other kind of complimentary issue with regards to that and the, the integrity of the survey is that, um, we, it, we will have an opportunity to, to look and make sure there's no, you know, kind of weird anomaly that is happening in the number of responses and stuff. I mean, for example, if you had a survey and you had seventy percent of the respondents female, that would suggest to you that there's something going on in terms of how the, uh, the distribution or the use of it. So it's, it's those types of issues that the consulting company are able to, to verify that we're getting the kind of representative response that we want to, want to have. The second item, um, is, uh, we've had some inquiry with regards to, um, status of financial, uh, information. And I think I've been keeping the council informed on the weekly report, um, about the status of our ongoing, uh, efforts to, uh, get financial information and have that analyzed. But, um, if I could just briefly read the response that we provided on social media today. "The applicant, uh, Universal Paragon Corporation, is required to provide financial data to the city concerning anticipated revenues, expenses, and overall financing of the project. The city has hired our own financial consultant Kaiser Marston to do an independent analysis review of this information after it is received." At this point in time, Kaiser Marston is, um, awaiting for this information to be provided by the applicant. The applicant, uh, can state, uh, had provided some information several, um, weeks ago, uh, but it was not, um, adequate for what we need. Um, and, uh, a, a second request was sent back to them to, uh, to clarify their, or to actually get the information that we needed. Until the analysis is complete, uh, it is unknown what type of financing will be needed, whether it is enhanced infrastructure financing district as proposed in Senate Bill six twenty-eight, which is basically a use of tax increment dollars or what we used to call tax increment dollars under the old redevelopment agencies, or other types of financing, or no city-backed financing. We apologize if this response doesn't quite answer the question, but it is because it is really too early in the process to say exactly what, uh, financing models will be used. And we, um, let people know that the city council, city staff recognize how important this information is and will be made, be available for public review in a timely fashion once we have it and have it evaluated and actually have it vetted. I think it's our intention that once our consultant has had an opportunity to look at, uh, information provided by the, um, applicant, we'll be vetting that in our own way through our council subcommittee, um, and, um, and then ultimately bringing that back to the council. I, I will say that as, um, late this afternoon, I did receive an email from, um, the general manager of UPC indicating that they will have the information as requested by Kaiser Marston the week of September seventeenth. So hopefully that process will, will move along. And, uh, just a kind of one other piece of information in this is that what we've really been trying to get at, at is a, um, is, is analysis that would, uh, provide, um, information for us in terms of phasing, of a phase of the project. We all know that this is six hundred acres. Um, you know, we can tell from, you know, our personal experience with Sierra Point. But you just go to San Francisco with, uh, Mission Bay, these things take years and years and, and literally decades to, to roll out. So there's no way, um, to, to look at a perform or to look at a financial analysis as if you're looking at it on the final day when everything is built and everything is built out, um, is really kind of unrealistic and doesn't give you a, a picture of what needs to happen to, to, to get you there. And of course, the other very important issue in all this is what is it, you know, we're going to, uh, allow from a land use standpoint? And, and that is really what's driving the, the comment that it's a little bit, um, early in the process until we, um, have a real handle on what, um, is gonna be the land use mix out there, um, in terms of densities and types. Then, uh, you know, at that point in time, you can really hone in on your financial information. And of course, all that ultimately is gonna be subject to the, the negotiation and the development agreement and what, uh, the, the, you know, the, the city, um, wants to do. I think, you know, also parenthetically, because Stuart and I have been talking about this quite a bit this week and we've talked about it quite a bit over many years now at this point. But, um, you know, from our perspective, there's, there's, um, you know, some public financing that has worked. On, on the city's, uh, case, um, we did a, a district, um, up in the northeast ridge that was supported by the, um, property taxes. People who live up there pay. Uh, that has worked fine. We're basically a conduit for that. We had a financing mechanism out at Sierra Point, uh, that was put in place in the nineteen, I guess, uh, early eighties or perhaps late seventies, um, in which, um, a third party in that case, MetLife, was, was brought in as kind of the backstop for the, uh, the financing and to, uh, um, assure the, uh, the financing upfront. That was very, um, I, that, that didn't work out real well. It didn't work out real well for MetLife. It didn't work out real well for us. Um, and that's something that, you know, we would definitely not, uh, suggest ever doing in the, in the future. And again, this is just my, my philosophy and I think Stuart's philosophy. And I, I think it's been consistent with past meetings for the city councils over many years. I think we first hired Kaiser Marston about ten, twelve years ago, something in that neighborhood. And, um, the principal, Tim Kelly, is, was always, um, he, he remembers that night very well when he met with the Brisbane City Council. And the Brisbane City Council made it very clear that, you know, that they were not going to put the community at risk financially for any kind of development on, on the Baylands. And I think that's kind of the guiding philosophy that we have is that we're not gonna put our, our own revenues at risk. We're not gonna put ourselves in a position where, um, we're guaranteeing anybody's, uh, um, development. We just are, uh, you know, um, if, and the way I, you know, I've always looked at it is that if you're San Francisco and you have a, 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 a development that goes south on you a little bit and you have to put maybe ten million dollars a year into it, well, you know, that probably isn't the greatest thing in the world, but it's not gonna, um, cause, uh, great financial harm to your, your, your community. Obviously, for us, that's an entirely different picture. We, we just, we cannot take that kind of risk. So, um, that I think will be the, kind of the guiding, um, principle in terms of moving forward with whatever development agreements we end up with, whatever financial mechanisms we end up with, that, you know, that we, we as a city cannot be at risk. And then the one final thing, as I, I put out to you just an update, that as of this afternoon, we had actually had a hundred surveys, um, filled out and, and returned. I actually know it's a hundred and one, because I put mine in the mail this afternoon. There's at least a hundred and one returned surveys.
And how many surveys were originally mailed?
Uh, every, every registered voter, which is, I don't know.
Twenty-three hundred, twenty-four hundred, something like that.
Yeah, in that ballpark. Yeah, sure. Look at you, you would know.
One other thing, can you touch on the error on page two that we will, um, look at?
Yeah, there, there, there is an error on page two where the, the boxes were left in at the, the top, um, without really a question being attached to it. And, um, so we'll see, um, when we get the return or the results back. You know, if there's any sense that that distorted people's response. You know, hopefully people will kind of figure it out as they go through it. But that was an error in terms of that, that top row.
So just to recap on the numbers, um, the, the identification numbers that en- ensure that the survey is exclusive to that particular user, um, is raw data that never comes back to the cities, to Brisbane. It stays with the consultant as part of the raw data, um, verification process?
Absolutely. I mean, our, our interest is in, is in the composite survey and what the community as a, as a whole thinks, not what any one individual might, might, I mean, that's not of any real interest to us. And so it's only a control mechanism to make sure that they, there's integrity in the, uh, in the survey process.
Okay. Because, um, while the survey went out, you know, as a cover of, uh, under my name as mayor, I have had a couple of comments and I did want to reassure the public that that was raw data information that stayed with the consultant and did not come to the city. And for people to be assured of their anonymity here at the city level. And I think it's very important that, that, that is reiterated to the public.
Yes, absolutely. And in, in any way we can assure people that that's the case.
Thank you. Any other city manager reports?
None tonight.
Okay. And that brings us to our mayor council matters and countywide assignments, subcommittee reports. Laurie, would you like to go first?
Sure. So I think at the last meeting, we skipped over this. So I'll report from, I guess, the last month or so, since our last meeting in August. So let's see, we've had two economic development subcommittee meetings. The first one was about the park side at Brisbane Village specific plan, which we are also meeting again, um, tomorrow to conduct interviews of, um, three firms. And that's also, um, you know, it's a public meeting open, open to the public, so anybody can attend.
And when is that meeting?
That meeting starts at eleven. It goes until, at two-thirty. There will be three firms that will be interviewed. And I don't know if Cliff has anything to add on that issue, that topic. The second economic development meeting we had, um, last week, uh, was with the owners of the quarry and some new prospective purchasers. And we talked about, um, you know, some suggestions on the process and we gave them the history of the, of that site. Um, and we also met with, uh, the owners and brokers at Opus dealing with Sierra Point. And I don't know if Cliff has anything to add on that.
No, that was pretty much about it.
Okay. Second thing to report on, um, that I attended, um, as the Brisbane representative on the Community Choice Energy Advisory Board for San Mateo County. I've been attending those meetings monthly. And at the last meeting, um, about a week ago, uh, we heard presentations and had Q and A with, uh, council members who were on the boards of the, uh, CCEs that we're looking at as models, Sonoma Clean Power and Marine Clean Energy. And they talked about some of the governing issues that they've done, dealt with. And the staff there said that they anticipate the technical study, um, dealing with the load issues from the, you know, they're collecting data from the whole county. That is due to be complete by September first and we'll be studying that report at our next meeting. And they're, they put out a timeline. They said that they expect to have the eventual rollout of the CCE program in around August two thousand and sixteen. Um, and at this point, they're trying to do community outreach, um, in, you know, all the countywide communities to just educate people on what a CCE is and, you know, what, what is happening. So they're working with our staff on looking at different community events coming up to, um, put out information to the public. Also on the library board, um, or library planning subcommittee, um, dealing with the new library, we had a kickoff event and two, um, or no, three visioning, uh, meetings where we met with different A and E firms that submitted bids. And the next step is to have a, an interview process, um, with them. And that was very productive. We had different groups at the, at the visioning meetings from Parks and Rec to SPTO to the mob. And everyone had a lot of great ideas about what they'd like to see, what the community would like to see at the new library. I also attended the Public Information and Technology Committee meeting with Clark. We talked about incorporating Brisbane Town Hall, um, to do, into the specific plan. To do into the specific plan uh that we're looking at for the uh parkside at Brisbane Village. And that's gonna be.
Brisbane Town Hall?
Yeah it's going to be part of the city's website and um CJ McDonald is is one that's working on that with the city it's right now it's he showed us the beta version of it and it.
It's gonna come back to the council for.
Yeah for approval of a contract but he showed us what what he's working on setting up as a proposal and in instead of remember you may remember um some time ago the. Council looked at a proposal to use a an outside service for a online outreach community outreach and we decided we didn't want to do that so. We're looking at doing it in-house instead and using the specific plan for Parkside at Brisbane Village as the first um project to test that out on so that'll come to the council. And then Terry and I yesterday attended a webinar or participated in a webinar High Speed Rail that we we heard the updates on what's going on with California High Speed Rail. And it was very similar to what we heard that some of us may have attended a month or so ago in in Brisbane.
For the Caltrain electrification but it was um to add to that it was um not very informative as far as any specifics.
No it was a pretty broad overview.
Yes.
And that's it for me.
At least my opinion of it.
So those are my updates.
Yeah that's really good you've been busy. Wow that was very impressive though.
We had um facility subcommittee ran myself in regards to the skate park uh the fifty percent design. Uh we made some suggestive suggestive cuts uh before we do the request for proposals right and that should be coming back to the council. October yeah so.
Can I ask about that I saw an email today about the suggested cuts and I saw that the skate spot was being suggested by the subcommittee to be eliminated why was that?
The preliminary numbers that came back were about a hundred thousand dollars over uh.
More than that actually.
And that spot the the skate spot was like seventy-five thousand dollars of that so uh we suggested that uh we probably really want to. Stay within the proposed budget to what we said of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range and not really kind of start escalating up that's why.
Okay and then there was also a a s- a suggestion a recommendation by the subcommittee to add in a quarter pipe is it or to do some enhancement to the.
No that's yeah.
So I I mean if I can try and explain at the last uh community meeting um if you remember if you have any visualization of the. Project before that there was a platform and the platform was a half pipe and then the suggestion was to put a quarter pipe on top of the platform so that way you can make the flow. From uh coming onto the platform and going off the platform easier as opposed to coming to a complete stop on a platform and then turning around and coming back off. But because that was an addition beyond what the city council saw on the initial project and it was estimated at the moment to be about thirty thousand dollars. That the subcommittee recommend suggested that that be an alt an add to the bid to see what the actual bids come at and to see if we can do that within the budget that the city council previously set.
Okay thank you.
And I have a question for you for you guys so uh when we saw the the proposal last time we we were looking at the skate park.
Is your mic on Cliff?
Here I ask better okay sorry so when we looked at the proposal the last time uh for the design of the skate park. The there was a fairly tall wall that that faced uh Old County Road and we had talked about potentially looking at. Uh altering the the flow of the of the skate park so that that wall would be on the north side instead of the south side so is that something you guys looked at? Just curious just you know is this so that you could see the kids skating through you know if you're at the park if you're driving by you can see the kids. Doing their activities rather than just seeing a wall um and that's that that's your your interface.
Still would be a a wall there because that's the longest part of it. But there's like we did talk about you know screening you know the fencing and stuff and you know how it integrates with the basketball court because some people wanted it more open. And we talked about the safety of you know flying skateboards and flying basketballs integrating with each other so uh. There still is a wall there I don't know if it's as um from the from the design probably what you're talking about.
I have to go back and look at it but I recall it it's all fenced in uh and there was a suggestion that the fence between the skate park and the basketball court be removed.
Yeah.
And the uh skate park designer strongly advised against that uh as a really uh bad safety move. And so we agreed with the skate park designer that you know there should be some protection because some of those skateboards do fly around and if there's nothing to stop them you know they could. Slam into somebody in the basketball court and that probably wouldn't be too keen so uh we agreed with the designer to to leave the fence in the bid. But all this is gonna you know come back to the whole full council.
Okay.
This is just uh you know preliminary thought so that the staff can put together options uh and then it all comes back to everybody here.
Okay good.
I don't have any more subcommittee uh.
Okay.
I was waiting for Cliff's airport roundtable report.
Okay yeah alright I was thinking maybe we wanted to go.
I got enough much to say so.
Okay so uh.
Yours is the big one.
Yeah so we had a a couple of meetings regarding airplane noise so uh the roundtable has. Uh two uh technical advisory groups one for departures one for arrivals so I attended both the one that concerns us are the departures and that was held at um. City of South San Francisco and in attendance was Don Kirby he is the TRACON manager. Who oversees the air traffic controllers and so it was actually a very good conversation that we had with him there were some members of of the community that were there. And so we talked about trying to increase more flights flying over the waypoint the stick waypoint uh which is out on the bay rather than vectoring over Brisbane and he. He said at the meeting that uh he would like to see more flights fly over the waypoint rather than being vectored so for him to make that comment uh was was very um. Very positive then uh later that day I had a meeting with members of the public uh here in the council chambers and just. Provided that information uh to the community got feedback from the community because we then a few days later had a meeting. In Foster City that was was put on by Congresswoman Jackie Spear and so all of the cities in the northern part of San Mateo County had an opportunity to. To give their personal story not only to Congresswoman Spear and her staff but also to uh FAA uh Western Regional Director Glenn Martin. And so uh it was a very good exchange uh members of the public that represented Brisbane Peter Grace Karen Cunningham and Barb Burchard and and they did a fabulous job. Especially Peter he was he was very articulate and he gave a very good presentation and and it was a very nice exchange with our community members Congresswoman Spear and the FAA so. I think we all came away from that meeting feeling like okay we might have something here uh one of the things that uh Brian Perkins brought up was that. He had been a champion for us in regards to reducing uh nighttime noise disturbances from airplanes and ever since the the next gen procedures went online. We've seen an uptick in nighttime noise disturbances and Glenn Martin acknowledged it and said yes we we should look at that and try and get back to where we were. And so hopefully um there's a potentially a meeting in September so we'll have Glenn Martin plus uh FAA representation at the tower and in in Sacramento at TRACON. This this past me the the meeting at Jackie Spear's office or Jackie Spear that she hosted in Foster City did not have those members of the FAA there and so not having all of the key stakeholders from the FAA. In the same room talking with each other limits what you can and can't do you say okay well I think we can do that rather than yes we can implement and but you need to have all of those guys there. So hopefully in September that meeting gets put together.
Who who's Glenn Martin?
He is uh I believe his title is the Western Regional Director for the FAA. So he he would oversee the NorCal TRACON or Metroplex.
And Cliff um did can you talk a little about the noise monitor at the ridge has that been installed and have there been any results that have come back at this point?
So I believe it it hasn't it wasn't it installed Clay?
That at the the uh there was one additional one at the ridge yeah.
I think at Mission Blue was it at Mission Blue?
Yes.
Is that the way it was placed?
Yeah I think there was a request to do another one at BES that has never been in been um that's never happened.
Okay.
But the one at Mission Blue did happen.
Alright and you know one of the suggestions uh that was that was given by Peter Grace which I think is a very excellent suggestion is trying to marry the noise event. With uh the flight procedures or the flight tracks do the planes you know the planes that fly over the waypoint. What do they register as far as noise events and the ones that are vectored what do they register uh of course sometimes I'm sure all of you have seen it. Uh a plane will be vectored before it even reaches Brisbane and so there's a vectored flight that causes no disturbance because it it turns uh uh very close to one oh one. But uh in talking with Don Kirby he's he told me he said I would prefer that those planes not make that that very quick turn even if it doesn't have. Uh a noise disturbance he'd rather see the planes fly over the waypoint creating more efficiency and more predictability and I I I think that. Would be the best route to take because then that will make sure that the planes hopefully in theory fly over the baylands and then uh fly over the areas that where there is not residential um disturbances. And then um so I was at a a LPMG Caltrain modernization meeting and we had a representative from from High Speed Rail give a presentation. To the issues that um you know I have you know a a bone to to contend with is. One is is the the rail yard and so they are seriously looking at the baylands as the place for the rail yard. And uh they're not looking at San Francisco uh there's a location in Gilroy the city of Gilroy says yes we want the rail yard. But High Speed Rail doesn't want to put the rail yard there they said we prefer to to put it in Brisbane and I know that staff will be having a meeting with uh High Speed Rail tomorrow. So uh they want the the rail yard to be near the endpoint of the line. So we'll see they're looking at between fifty and a hundred acres for uh the rail yard and uh you know I I said well you know we we're in the YR process. And we had a rail yard back in the day but we're not really interested in in having another rail yard he says yes we understand that but this is our preferred uh location.
Do they still want to dig down fifty feet?
Yeah so then the other item are are the 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 rail cars for uh Caltrain and so I was on vacation during the last LPMG meeting so they were. The discussion was the um the heights of the doors for the trains and so Caltrain had been designed to have doors at twenty-four inches right now we have eight inch platforms so that's not that much of a step up. San Francisco because of the Transbay Terminal they want all of the platforms to be at fifty inches High Speed Rail wants the car heights to be at fifty inches for um for Caltrain. And so because High Speed Rail is providing six hundred million dollars to. Caltrain they came up with this compromise and so right now the design of the car is to have. A twenty-four inch door two doors in the center of the car and then a fifty inch door that is above the wheels one of one of the wheel uh wells. And so that additional modification will cost anywhere between twenty and twenty-five million additional dollars to the taxpayer. And to you know and then so what will happen is that if this goes through and I hope it doesn't there's one more meeting that the JPB will have. But if it does go through then they'll have two doors one of the doors the fifty inch ones will have seats in front of it and it'll never open. And then if uh Transbay Terminal gets its wish and has all fifty inch platforms then they will have then the train itself will have two sets of doors and we will lose. Quite a bit of capacity which is one of the main reasons why we are electrifying the system in the first place is to increase capacity and then uh.
Boy stupid keeps.
Right I tell you and then the there's only three stations that have that will um have High Speed Rail trains San Jose Milbury and San Francisco.
Maybe one other.
I I don't think so you're you're talking about Redwood City or you're.
Well they they it's a a location to be named later.
Yeah.
Mid Peninsula they're calling it.
Mid Peninsula.
Mid Peninsula okay so um but if we if um so High Speed Rail's argument for doing the fifty inch they're saying well there might be a possibility. Well a situation could happen where a train might uh break down during the middle of the run and so we need to be able to have uh level boarding I guess. When the train breaks down of course you hope that the trains that they buy don't have those problems but you know to build and construct those platforms to fifty inches. On at every single station even though they won't have that train stopping off at their station is really dumb and it will take a long time uh to.
I said stupid is evolving.
It 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 is.
This project is just.
There's the update.
It would. Clay I can I can I.
Nah nah.
Back on that would. Should we invite these folks back to the view Brisbane that want to put the rail yard there I mean remember last time that uh. Uh I I'm assuming that all the players have changed who are doing the nuts and bolts of this. It was like I recall they wanted to dig down fifty feet on the landfill and they just didn't understand it they were looking at things from a twenty thousand foot level and I suspect this is the case here also. That they're designing the bathrooms before they know where they're gonna go you know.
I I I can't tell you too much uh at this point they they had called to make an appointment um sometime back and then and then called to cancel the meeting. Um and then uh reset it for uh for tomorrow so I'll get the information out to you on my weekly report on what they're saying you you're absolutely correct in the past they uh I think were. Randy likes to call it they took a a Google Earth approach to their uh their um location study um and um seemed to be quite surprised if there was a a landfill there. They didn't seem to even know that at that at that point in time um so um we'll see we'll see where how sophisticated they are or just what they what they know and. I think more importantly just what their process is gonna be moving moving forward and um what their criteria is and you know because that was always a shifting issue with what what their criteria was what they were really looking for how it would operate. So I'll I'll get you tomorrow. So I'll, I'll get you tomorrow what I see and then we'll go from there.
San Francisco to Merced. I don't get it. This is the dumbest thing that I've seen, the biggest waste of public money that I, I just can't believe it. I mean, you know, I was involved in that early on. You know, everybody agrees that High Speed Rail is a good idea, but the implement, implementation of it and how it, how the thing's all going to be put together, I mean, this, this, this leg from San Jose to San Francisco is the dumbest thing I've heard in, in a long, long time. Electrification of Caltrain is where they need to focus.
Yeah.
But they're just being idiots. And, you know, I'll publicly say that and I'd publicly say that to their face, too. It's just stupidity beyond belief, you know?
Where are we on the, have they started their EIR yet?
Well, I'm pretty sure they have not. I mean, I think that's part of what tomorrow's conversation is about, is what their process is.
I believe they wanted to have, from what we heard yesterday, 2000, November of 2016, they expected to have the draft EIR completed.
Something like that. I think it was 16 or 17, but I-
I'd have to look at my notes, which I didn't bring, but they were very perky and said that they were going to have outreach for community, but that they are really pushing to get their EIR published it within, like I said, about the next year. And that they didn't really have a lot of the specifics yet as far as what the, the whole process was going to be and how they would work out the issues that mostly they're worried about the southern, southern cities and their reception to the High Speed Rail. And Palo Alto had some very specific issues that came up in the questions and comments about taking of homes and right-of-way and, and things that they didn't really want to discuss.
Right. They said that they'd already received environmental clearance for the projects from Merced to Fresno and Fresno to Bakersfield and the other portions of the line were still in progress.
And we're supposed to be getting a copy of the presentation, the slideshow, in our email box for all the people who attended and as soon as that's available, I will forward that to staff who could distribute it.
We've actually already got it, so we'll get it out to you.
Okay. The only thing I have to report is Laurie and I are the, you know, liaison committee, the Open Space Ecology Committee, and they are getting fairly close to completing a climate action plan to recommend to the council. And we are giving our input to the process. I think they're meeting next Tuesday. So Laurie, that's the deadline?
Yes.
So-
I'd like to do this.
I put in my two cents and Laurie's going to do the same and then they're going to consider it and then presumably make a recommendation to the full council. So that's probably coming in October sometime?
No, it'll be, it'll be on your September 17th agenda.
That's, that's soon?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it has, and I actually, Adam Mayor, I need to talk to you a little bit after the meeting with regards to that because we, we are recommending pursuing the Beacon Award, assuming that the council approves that. And that would be actually given at the League of California Cities Meeting on October 1st, I believe. So if, if it's indeed ready to go, then we would, we would submit that. And I, I actually, I think we already know that we would be, we've provided the, we would be given the award. And I think we'll go all through that on the Sep- 17th, but it seems that the various programs that we've had over the years that are encompassed in this, this plan and I think with the sharpening of the wording that we did the other day, that we've, we've probably got one of the better plans in the, in the, better plans and better implementations in the state.
We're, we're trying to remember how Clark, we've talked about before, some of the climate action plans were sort of exercise in fantasy and we're trying to avoid that.
Right. Well, that's why we didn't take the money from CCAG on, on that. I think we're the only city that did, not really.
But we'll see on the, on the 17th?
On the 17th.
Okay.
So one other thing that we should mention is that we did have a resignation from the Complete Streets Subcommittee. And I think we should discuss if we would like to have Sherry publish for an opening on that committee. Dolores Gomez resigned from that committee and I want to thank her for all her hard work on it. But the current number of members on that committee is, we were already short, weren't we?
Your, your microphone.
I believe we have six, but am I forgetting that someone, that we were at six? I'd have to look at my log back in my-
I, I could be wrong, but we, we would like to bring it back up to seven and with the, with the current things that are going on that, that encompass the Complete Streets, I think it would be good if we, if we put notice out for applications, maybe not perhaps a tight deadline, but that we notify the public to see if we can, if, if the council would like to do that.
That's one option. Another is that the, we'll be recruiting for a lot of positions in January. There's many positions on all of our boards and commissions that are expiring in January, including ones on the Complete Street Safety. So I'm happy to do that one separate for one position now, if that's what you direct, but the-
It might be better to hold it over for January.
It's close enough that it might be better to just do them all together.
Okay.
So that's another option.
Yeah, I think that made sense because last time we were able to get people who had applied for one position to agree to serve on another.
Right.
So it's good to have them consider it all together.
Okay. So, any other council discussion? That'll bring us to Oral Communications Number Two. And are there any members of the public who would like to speak on an item that was not discussed on our agenda tonight? Seeing no hands and having no slips, I move to adjourn to a successor agency meeting? Or I ask for a motion?
Nah, a second.
Hi.
First, second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need to take a five-minute, just a 30-second break or do we want to take a five-minute?